Please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, the retreat and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Harley.
Here.
Mr. George.
Here.
Mr. Coniker.
Here.
Mr. Lesby. Ms. Metzler.
Here.
Mr. Norris.
Here.
Ms. Prickett.
Here.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Here.
Seven present, one absent.
Thank you. Moving on to visitors' comments, agenda items only. Seeing none, we'll move on to item number five, which is Region One Vacant Seat Interview. And I'll ask Mr. Mike Hoffman to come down to the table. And just, so we're all aware, I sent this out earlier, we're going to basically follow the same process we had done when we had previous open seats, going to ask the same questions in the same order. As it was last year, obviously, the public has the right to attend, but not participate in that interview. There won't be any follow-up or sort of interactive discussion, that way it's consistent with what we've done before. And Mr. Hoffman is candidate to replace Tony Falgittor, who resigned approximately a month ago, maybe a little less, I forget the exact date. But, Mr. Hoffman, thank you for being here this evening.
Of course.
Appreciate your time. I'm going to ask you three questions, and I'll give you a minute or a couple of seconds here after each one to gather your thoughts. First, why do you want to be a school board director?
I want to be a school board director because I care deeply about education, and I want to be part of our community's future. I think that we could all agree that our children are the community's future, and most of us will probably say they're the best part of the community as well. I believe that by teaching the value of education through committed teachers, safe environments, and providing an array of learning experiences, we can instill in our children that learning is a lifelong venture, which will ultimately teach them how to make themselves successful in virtually all situations. My own education path is pretty unique. After high school, I went and became an EMT. Then I joined the military, did a couple tours in Iraq, came back and went to a residential carpentry school, and then I decided to go and get two bachelor's degrees, one in finance, one in management, paid for entirely by the government, which was a nice bonus. But in each of those endeavors, I learned skills hard and soft that I use today consistently. I don't think that education is something that can be boxed in a pretty package, and I think that each child is unique and valuable. And so I believe that using my experiences, I could help Octorara embrace that, and that hopefully, some, at least some, can see that they could have their own path to success.
Next question. What do you believe is the basic purpose or role of a school board director?
I think fundamentally, they're a liaison between the community and the school, and their primary role is to put the children first, the students first, and the community second.
Next question. How would you measure or define success as a school board director?
Sure. A successful director puts the children first, recognizes the experience and the skill that our teachers have, and supports them, and is responsible with community's resources. Additionally, a school board director brings stability to the board by recognizing that it's not a competitive sport, but a collaborative environment that serve best by recognizing everybody's good intentions and their valuable experiences, and their intent to do good. And by doing that, we can serve our community and our children the best.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda are presentations. Turn it over to Dr. Lieber.
Okay, we have two presentations. I shared with you their slides. I think there's maybe some slight edits that they sent me today. But Mel, would you come? Essential School, Effective Schools Solutions. Mel's been with us before. What we are, what we are really looking to do is to support students in our primary learning center, where they have some unique challenges coming in to our system. And when, when Mel is done, I've asked Kale to explain the graphic that he has created, and so he'll, he'll follow up. So thank you for being here and for sharing this, this prospectus with us.
On, on? Oh. Can you hear me now? As they say? Okay. I didn't know about the green light. Now the green light is on, so. Usually I have a loud enough voice, people can hear me anyway, but this should help. So Effective School Solutions has been providing mental health services in schools since 2009. We actually started as a private therapeutic day school in New Jersey, the type of place where students were sent if they had clinical needs significant enough that they couldn't be met in the school setting. And the gentleman who was the leader of the organization at the time felt really proud of the clinical services that the kids were receiving, but that they were missing out on being part of their school community. So in 2009, we partnered with two districts in New Jersey to provide this programming, and that was successful. So now we've grown, and we are across the country in 13 states and 120 districts and growing. We seek to provide research-based clinical programming that is very outcomes-focused. We seek to be highly collaborative with the districts that we partner with, the school teams, the families, and any other community providers that are in the school. So I'm just really proud of the work that we do. I was a school administrator myself for much of my career, and in talking to your primary center folks, knowing that the impact that we can make in an elementary school, I'm excited to be here this evening to share it with you. So this slide seeks to provide an overview of the services and supports that would be in place if you were to approve a partnership with Effective School Solutions. You can see that we would be providing a full-time master's level clinician who would be experienced in working with smaller children who have clinical and behavioral challenges. We will be providing programmatic support as well as clinical supervision for that clinician, and we will be doing ongoing consultation with your district and school leadership. The support will be provided through a regional clinical director that would be assigned to Octorara. That person would be supervising the clinician in the primary center. You would also get the ongoing support of myself as the Director of District Partnerships, our regional clinical vice president, Patsy, and our Director of Behavioral Programs, Frank. You will also have an assigned quality and risk management staff person that would be assigned to your district, and that person's job is to continually, to continually look at the student progress of the students that are being served by the Effective School Solutions clinician to make sure that they're making progress in all of those metrics that we know are important for school success, like attendance and grades and discipline, as well as progress in their therapeutic goals and their wellness index. And we would be providing six hours of professional development to your school each year. We have an amazing professional development team as a part of Effective School Solutions and a really great catalog of offerings of some really robust professional development. So we would be working with your team to determine which workshops are the best fit to meet the goals of the district, as well as the needs of your staff in determining which workshops we would deliver and what time they would work within your calendar. This slide is an overview of the programming that we would be providing at the primary center. So you can see the clinician would be working with 10 to 12 students, and those students would be students with more intensive mental and behavioral health challenges. The caseload would be determined collaboratively by Octorara and our clinical team. Students who are part of that cohort would receive at minimum weekly individual therapy. They can receive up to daily group therapy. They would have family sessions twice per month because we believe that treating the family is as important as treating the student in Effective School Solutions. We would be doing classroom push-in support, meaning that the clinician would be able to go into the classroom of the students on their caseload and help them to apply the things that they've learned in their therapy sessions to stay regulated in that class and be successful. And the concurrent benefit of that is they can also support the teacher in working with those students more constructively. And that clinician would be available if the student becomes dysregulated, starts to rise up the behavior curve, to respond therapeutically and help, help that student to become regulated again so that they can be successful in staying in class, hopefully, and continuing on with their school day. As I mentioned earlier, we are a very outcomes-based organization, so we will continually collect data and work with you to know that you're getting the return on your investment, which translates into student success. You can see the top row is the aggregate data that our school team, who is on the quality and risk management group part of Effective School Solutions, will be collecting. You can see we have high success in preventing outplacement. We have a very good satisfaction rate from our parents and caregivers, and great success in preventing absences of students who are chronically absent, decreasing the number of disciplinary incidences of students who are struggling behaviorally, and we see increase in at least one letter grade of the students that are being served by our program. So those are some really awesome data points, I think, to share. I'll also share, we do have a partnership with the Yale Child Study Center. And the bottom row of data, the blue circles, that shows the results of the study that they did on the programs that we provide in schools. So that was a quick overview of the work that we do. If you have any questions you'd like me to answer, I'd be pleased to do that.
I have one question. That, I think it said six hours of professional development. Would that be, if we needed more, or if the staff needed more, obviously that would be available? At a cost or however that gets worked out?
Yes.
But that would be available if we needed more?
Yes. If, if the administration decided they wanted more, we would work with them to provide it, absolutely.
It says there's a full-time master's clinician that would be on site. Are they licensed in either?
So we either hire folks who are fully licensed or are pursuing their licensure. We require that if a person has a master's and have experience in treating students that are similar in demographic to the students that a school wants us to serve. If they don't have their licensure yet, they're required to get it while they work for us. And because we clinically supervise them, they're able to obtain their licensure while working for us.
The caseload's at 10 to 12. Is that a solid number for what, or is it an estimate? Or is, we haven't identified 10 to 12 kids already, I'm assuming, by name, like these 10 to 12 we're going to work with. And also with that, I'm assuming some, the kids would have to be pre-diagnosed because I saw words, child behavior, psychiatric disorders, intensive mental health needs. I'm assuming they have to be pre-diagnosed before they can step into your program.
That's a great question. So we do a full bio-psychosocial assessment on the students who are referred to us. We do ask parents to consent to the treatment, so there's a full collaboration with the family, but there doesn't have to be an existing diagnosis. It's whoever the school feels would be the best fit. And we do what's called a student review, and that's a collaborative process between our team and the school team to determine who would be the best fit for those intensive services. Oh, yes. Yes. That's a great question.
Yeah. That, that is a really good question. And one of the, one of the struggles that we have, and the reason we've selected this building for this is for a lot of students who have experienced trauma and, and come in increasingly, Mr. Hillbalt was telling me today, increasingly, we're just, we're seeing kids who have not been in an educational setting. And they're really pre-special ed because we don't have data, we don't have results, and the special ed model is a discrepancy model. So a student has to fall so far in order to qualify. And, and one of the things that I like about having this at the younger age is potentially, we have students who we, we either avoid a special education label because they, they are dropping, or we're able to put in place things to help. Outplacement that, that Mel talked about starts at $55,000 a year. And then attached to that, it can be, it can be more money depending on where the placement is. There's transportation on top of it. And so servicing, servicing 10 students, that's, that's often our most intense, intense needs. And it's something, it's a highly developed skill set and in, in work in mental health and in therapy that we're seeking. Thank you, Mel.
Oh, thank you.
And Mel has a long drive, and so I always put you at the beginning so that you can say farewell.
I appreciate it.
If you want to stay for a moment, because I'm going to ask Mr. Hillbalt to come up and explain this, this graphic that I asked him to put together because it, it dovetails with this proposal.
Good evening, everyone. So following Mel's presentation and hearing a little bit from Dr. Lieber about some of the, the present needs that we have at the Primary Learning Center, I thought that, you know, in conjunction with Dr. Lieber, we thought that it would be prudent to share what we already have, how the things we have in place are hitting some marks, and the particular mark that Mel is speaking to and how her services could fit into the complement of what Octorara has already built for student success. I'm, I'm not going to read everything to you, but I do just want to point out and draw a little bit of attention to some of the positions that we have. So right off the bat, in your top left, you'll see the position of interventionist. This is a position we have in every one of our buildings. This is the person who manages our MTSS model in conjunction with the principles. They make sure that the students have the support they need. They're hypothesizing about what it might take for a student to make an academic jump. Or in the past two years, we've added behavioral MTSS in place as well, so putting positive behavior support plans in place for students who might have that dysregulation that you heard something about. The goal is that we are finding solutions so that we can support students in a classroom when we're looking at interventionist-level support. The next, going straight across linearly, would be school counselor. Our school counselors, depending on the building, do a little bit of everything, as you'll see. Specifically, they're overseeing academics, career awareness, personal and social development. They assist with the SAFE process, the SAP process, which is our Student Assistance Program. They participate in our IEP and 504 meetings. They are able to run groups for students or meet individually with students who have lower-level needs in school, whether it's something that might be family-based that is baggage they're coming in with, managing friend groups, or helping with any other peer-type relationship in the school building. Also, as we get, I'd say it's the older levels, but it's really K through 12. If you've heard our 339 presentation, they're managing college and career readiness. So the role of school counselor has changed from where we were 20 years ago, where the school counselor was really doing a lot of the soft skills with students. They're now doing concerted college and career readiness. New in the past five years at Octorara is BCBA. That stands for Board Certified Behavior Analyst. That's the person that I often refer to as our Jedi-level behaviorist. They're board-certified, so they've got a top-tier level of, of education. They are the clinician that we turn to when we're trying to diagnose and understand the function of a student's behavior. So if a student's doing something that's significantly interrupting the education of them or their peers, the, this is the person who goes through and analyzes what that behavior means and where does it come from? So we can then create a behavior support plan that's targeted exactly to what it is that student is trying to gain, avoid, or access. Our BCBAs, we have two for our entire campus. I wish they were here so I could give them a little accolade. They are flying about anywhere and everywhere at any given moment of the day. On paper, one of them works with K to six, the other works with seven through 12, but we interchange them as necessary with different student needs or depending on, on what their schedules permit. That dovetails closely with our school psychologist. I described BCBAs as clinicians, school psychologists equally. They're the clinicians, they're the ones who are They're the clinicians, they're the ones who are performing the evaluations for students when we are looking to determine if they do qualify and are in need of special education. They complete our 504 evaluations. They're working with the multidisciplinary team, which would be with the interventionist, the principals, as previously mentioned, and of course, they're working with the administration. You know, when I talk about student services and special education, I rely, and Amanda relies heavily, on the school psychologists because they're so well-versed in the game of identifying students and delivering the consumable of education. So, they push a lot out to our principals and help alongside. Also new in the past five years is our role of school social worker. We have one school social worker presently covering grades K through 12. She is our truancy officer. She supports all of the legal obligations with working with our local magistrate when students become habitually truant. She's working alongside the principals with creating the SAFE plans. Those are our school attendance improvement plans for anyone who's beyond their four excused, unexcused absences. She is supporting Cheryl Todd, our registrar with McKinney Vento. She's a liaison to our families who need support outside of what the school building can do. So, she's navigating things like insurances, finding treatment for mental health, finding treatment for medical needs, assisting with bringing those services to families. She's also a liaison for the district when a student is outplaced at something like a residential treatment facility, or if they're at, if a student's at an outpatient hospitalization. Before the child would enter that, she's the person that's helping that program to receive the student. She's also then working with the families as the student's ready to transition back to any one of our buildings. Below that, you'll see our mental health specialists. We have two mental health specialists here in the district, one covering K to 6, the other one covering 7 through 12 presently. School-based mental health, this is something, again, new in the past five years that we've put in place to help support our students. We describe it as a level above the counseling that our school counselor would provide, but a level below that of which we would have with outside therapists. So, we're not delivering a medical model therapy, we're not utilizing any insurance, there's no money exchanged. It is not psychotherapy. It's, there's nothing that would be concerning in the discussion for a parent to say, "I don't know what this is." Instead, it's tailored towards school-based mental health needs. So, if a student is having anxiety in a PE class, if a student is struggling to attend classes for whatever reason, if a student is struggling with relationships in or out of school that's now coming into school and it's having an adverse reaction on their education, those are the triage programs that our mental health specialists work with. It is a short-term acute program. They are open with a student anywhere from six to eight weeks. Each of those clinicians maintains a caseload of 40 students at any given time through the year. You heard me speak back in the fall, I believe one of them was emerging, was maybe in like the 30s, because the year hadn't yet started enough for that person. But they're delivering a moderate dose of what mental health support would look like that will dovetail over to Melanie and Effective School Solutions. But before I get to that relationship, if you look bottom middle of your page, you'll see Communities and Schools. This is our most recent addition. Presently, we have, we actually just hired and onboarded in the building our second person from Communities and Schools. We have one person who is serving grades 9 through 12. She is working predominantly with one of the greatest needs of our building, and that's habitual truancy. We have students who aren't presently attending on a daily basis, or if they are attending, we have a large contingent of students who aren't accessing every class of their day. They're cutting classes, they're in various locations. Our charge to her with Dr. Propper was, let's address these students who need support. So, we're focusing heavy on the truancy part of it, although their menu of services goes into greater levels of counseling, therapeutic support, kind of doing some social work-type things, getting resources to families, resources to students, whether it's coats, food, finding things that folks are in need of. But right now, like I said, we're really targeting the truancy perspective. The other CIS worker is presently at the intermediate school with Dr. Cooper. He started at the end of last week, so I can't give you a great update on what he's working on, but his first step is going through a needs analysis of the building. That's with Dr. Cooper, that is with Ms. Steiner, the school counselor at that building, and then they have targeted look-for's of how to support the students in these last few weeks of school. When we roll into next school year, the hope is that that clinician, Dom London, will be moving over here to the intermediate, or into the middle school, because the students that are all there presently will be in this building for next year. So, we're starting those relationships early so that they can snowball into relationships here for our students. So, with that, I'll reserve.
So, Effective School Services, where do they, where do they fit in this chart?
Well, the chart's out of room, so I'll have to rework it to make them physically fit. But the big question that we've been talking about as a team is exactly what is the thing that we need to solve for? Dr. Lieber had pointed out that we have a lot of students, the trend with students post-COVID has been having more students at home, not in some type of brick-and-mortar structure. So, when we're receiving kindergartners, and in some cases, first graders, we have many, many cases where students aren't coming with any background. They're not used to the conventional norms of being in a classroom, using inside voices, how to physically be in the same space as other students, how to manage themselves in a hallway, open spaces, and then we're also seeing the backside of trauma. 10, 15 years ago, when we talked about trauma, you thought someone must have witnessed a car accident or something horrific. But through our research, you know, we're learning that trauma is anything that adversely affects a student and their ability to come into the building, which is why I think we're seeing our mental health specialist, our BCBA, and our social worker working around the clock. And the only way I can describe it is that meter is constantly spinning, and we've been trying to figure out, how can we add one more dose higher than what we already have, especially for this emerging group, the group of students that haven't yet entered a school? And that's where Effective School Solutions comes in. They would be that next step to give a little bit more support for a student before we, as a district, have to start having conversations about where else a family could access daily support that's not our building. Again, our goal is always to keep our students and our families connected to the fabric of Octorara. This would be one more way that we could keep them connected and support them so they don't have to pursue something differently. Should that be the case, of course, we would support them and always be here, but it's one more level that we can provide for our students and families.
Any questions for Mr. Hillbolt? All right, I'd also like to introduce Krista Fazio from Chester County Intermediate Unit. We have asked for some support. We don't have a communications department, and CCIU has a fabulous one. So, one of the things that they do is they support districts through communications, and we have asked them to generate a report for us around, kind of, what are our pride points here? What's the state of the district? What are we doing well? What are we working on? Where are our successes? And this is a broader, a broader campaign of what I've started to coin as the Octorara Promise, which is the promise that we make to the community of the things that we're going to do for our students, with our students, and goes along with Dr. Propper's initiative working on Portrait of a Brave. What are we, what are we producing in an end product in our students, and what do we want them to look like, and how do we celebrate those successes? And so, Krista and her team have put together a proposal that will really help us to share with our community, where are those successes? What are those pride points? What are the things that people don't know are happening in our district? So, Krista, with that, I'll have you kind of take us through the proposal.
Thank you. That would be very nice. Next. It looked like it was on, I apologize. Looking forward to working with the Octorara School District. Thank you for this opportunity. As Dr. Lieber mentioned, we have a great team in the Communications, Marketing, and Engagement Division at the Chester County Intermediate Unit. We're really set up to support school districts in this area, and this State of the District project is something that we're really excited about. When Dr. Lieber asked for our help in putting a proposal together to work on this, we jumped at the opportunity because we love telling district stories. We love supporting our districts, our 12 districts in Chester County, however we can. And what we realize is that there are so many great things happening here in the Octorara School District, but no one is really telling your story. You know, I'm sure that there's, you know, key communicators and fans of the district, and things are spreading word of mouth about the great things that you're doing, but a strategic communication effort to really tell those stories is going to have some really big impacts, which is what I think you are looking for as a district, which I'll get to in just a minute here when I talk about the need. So, looking at the need, and this was, this was some information that Dr. Lieber shared, was that Octorara sometimes goes unnoticed, right? And I think that that's because there's not a high awareness, right? And that's where that communication comes into play. And so, you know, despite the high taxes and the highest mileage rate, your strengths aren't fully communicated to the community, but also to the community outside of Octorara, right? When we're looking at Chester County as a whole, it is a destination for folks to, you know, move to. Chester County is highly sought after, and Octorara is part of that. So, we want to bring attention to the district, create a greater awareness of all the great things that are going on here in the district. And we really want to minimize that charter and cyber charter enrollment, and really strengthen the attractiveness of the district to those prospective residents when they're looking at the new developments in Octorara as an option for their families. They want to see the strengths of this district, and we're gonna, we're gonna show them. And we just need to position our brand, right, and really paint Octorara as the destination district in Chester County that it is. And how do we do that? We're really taking the approach of a storytelling initiative, so we want to deliver engaging multimedia stories that are aligned to your vision of empowering students to build successful futures, right? Everything is anchored in that vision, and the stories are what really are going to have an impact with your audiences, showcasing the voices of students, your staff, and your community members. We're gonna use print and digital formats to boost the engagement, to build that confidence in the district. So, the overview of our work, we're going to develop a very dynamic State of the District, as Dr. Lieber said, focused on storytelling. So, you may have seen an annual report from a neighboring district, there's some really great information about the financial status of the district, student enrollment data and testing data. That is all great, right? People do enjoy seeing that, but what we're realizing is that there is a much bigger story to tell here in Octorara, and it's really focused on our students and their achievements, and the great variety of achievements that you have, that your students accomplish, you know, from CTE to, you know, your athletics, your arts, everything. I think there's just such a robust, you know, offering of stories to pull from, and I think that that's what's gonna really make the State of the District unique to other annual reports. We're also not gonna stop there. We will leave you with a strategic communications plan, right? So, as we're doing this work, we will be creating a communication plan to hopefully support your communication efforts moving forward, because you're going to put out this great State of the District as part of that Octorara Promise, that overall campaign, and you're not going to want to stop. You're gonna want to continue with sharing the messages and sharing the stories of the district. So, we're gonna do our best to create a comprehensive communication plan without strategies outlined to help you be able to do that. So, for the State of the District, the first phase, we actually met with Dr. Lieber and his cabinet team to set that framework. I'll talk about that a little bit more in just a minute. We're now in identifying the stories phase, so we're really looking to Dr. Lieber and his leadership team to identify those really great stories, those top three accomplishments for the year that are in pursuit of that vision, right? Because remember, everything has to go back to that vision. And we're just looking at success stories that illustrates the vision and, that are connected to student successes. And then Phase Three, we'll establish that messaging platform and confirm the deliverables, hopefully by the end of May, it might be a little bit later. So, then we're gonna get into content capture and communication channel assessment. So, we'll be taking a look at, what are you currently using to share any information about the district? We're going to look at getting those interviews done with students, with staff, getting new photos to go along with those stories, to really put together a very polished State of the District that's gonna really impress your community and your prospective residents. We'll develop the deliverables and that strategic communication plan I mentioned, and then we're gonna finalize the plan and distribute the deliverables there, hopefully by September. So, in order to set that framework, that first phase that I showed you, we did ask Dr. Lieber and his cabinet these four questions. So, as they relate to the vision, what is the why behind the vision? What do you want people to know about the work here, Dr. School District, as it relates to the vision? What do you want people to think and feel about your work toward the vision? And how do you want people to engage with the vision? So, since that meeting, Dr. Lieber, my team has been working, and we have had a couple brainstorm, oops, sessions, and we were able to identify some emerging themes from that work that we did during that workshop time together. And what we discovered was that there's a clarity envisioned with your leadership, right? There is a clear unifying sentiment around that vision, empowering students to build successful futures. There's alignment and commitment in their role to really, I think, Dr. Lieber, you said, kick doors open for students, and that really stuck with us, but also to come alongside the students on their journey through the Octorara School District. We also heard that success is defined by multiple paths. I've heard that already since just being here with you tonight, mentioned a couple times, right? I think, Cal, you mentioned it, there's not one typical path, right, for every student. So, that'll be important for us as we're collecting our stories and identifying those stories, that we make sure that we hit each one of those, you know, potential paths for a successful Octorara student. You know, you're a small district, but you're able to do big things. When Dr. Lieber brought this potential project to me, he had a list of achievements and things that he wanted to share with me about the district, and it was, it was a great experience for me, because, you know, I'm not as familiar with the Octorara School District, so hearing all of those, those great points of pride were really great, and it just got the wheels turning and made me realize, well, this is a really special place, there's a lot to share from here. Student-centered decisions, focusing on what more can be done to engage and grow our students, and that community engagement and partnerships were important, right? So, working collaboratively to build meaningful learning experiences and growing those relationships. So, we have, I mentioned my team, this is the team that will be spending time in this work. Three of us up there have worked in school districts in Chester County, so we bring a pretty extensive knowledge of what is needed at the district level for, you know, communicating and sharing, sharing, you know, the good news of the district and bringing awareness to the great things that you're doing. Also on the team includes a graphic designer, our digital media specialist, who will be able to provide some social strategies to go along with the work that we're doing, and our marketing and engagement manager, because I think there is a marketing component to this work, to really appeal to those prospective residents in the Octorara School District. So, that'll be a really great challenge for us to design that State of the District that has a couple purposes, right? To communicate and share really great things that are happening, but also to draw awareness, raise awareness, and really draw people into the school district. So, we're really excited to do this work, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Well, we haven't, we haven't actually approved it yet, so I'm just gonna have to, I'm gonna have to go and beg and plead. No, I think... No, I, I think of all of the important things we're doing, I think this is a huge, huge piece of, of setting a cadence for how we communicate to our community about the amazing things that our kids are doing. We have, we have students in our Homeland Security Program from, I think it's 14 other high schools that are, that are coming to Octora. Krista was at another district, prominent one, not to be named, but starts with U. And one of their students said to me, said to Mr. Patika last year, "I, I wish that I went to Octora." And I don't, I don't know what's behind that, but that's the experience that, that students are experiencing in our Homeland Security Program. It's the experience you saw, the, the picture of our culinary arts kids. And I just, I'm, I'm sad that our community doesn't understand all that we do and all that we've put in place, and I would really love to see us be able to tell that story in an ongoing way and, and to set a cadence that allows our community to better understand what's happening here. So, thank you, Krista, for taking a chance with us.
Yeah, yeah, you remind me, Dr. Lever, too, some of the stories you shared were about alumni and the really successful things that your alumni are doing. And, and you know, one thing, when it comes to communications, if you are not communicating your story or controlling your narrative, you have no control of what the narrative is out, outside, right? You know, people look for that one source of truth and that one place to get the, you know, the right story and the information. And I mean, that's just how, why I think, you know, communications is so critical for a school district, and we're happy to help if, if we're lucky enough to, to continue to do this work. We're already doing it, you know, but we'll, you know, we'll hopefully get to continue.
Just the one question I had.
Yeah.
If we're talking about sort of a beginning of next year deliverable, would that then be updated every six months, every half year type thing?
Well, so part of, and I, I wrote to you about the strategy. I think we, we could, we could pursue our own department. That's probably not as cost-effective as engaging the IU in an ongoing way, because once they've, once they've created the work to keep it going throughout the year or at the end of the year again, it would probably be the most efficient thing for us. They're very talented. We could not, we could not hire one person to do what they do. And I think it's really, really smart. We, we had the letter last year from the Realtor member that you saw, and we, we talked about that. And they'd like to build houses here. They just don't know enough about our schools. And I think that's kind of shame on us. What are we, what are we doing to help people to understand the value that is, is brought to the communities through our schools? So, thank you for helping us reach for that height, Krista.
My pleasure. Any other questions?
Thank you. Back to the agenda. Information items. Criticare employee, Ms. Lindsay Fritz, will be assigned as the nurse for the summer programs. Recommended action items for this evening. A, that the Octora Board of School Directors appoint Mr. Mike Hoffman to fill the Region One vacancy through the next municipal election in November 2025. Need a motion?
So, move.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations. Thank you and congratulations.
So, Mike, we'll arrange a swearing, a swearing in with the judge probably sometime this week. Jill will communicate with you, and we'll go over and do that, and we'll be glad to welcome you next Monday. Good. Well, you, you kind of are right now. Because that's the, that's the only vote we're taking tonight, so.
Moving on to presentation of agenda items for the May 19, 2025, regular monthly public meeting. A, that the Octora Board of School Directors elect to be determined as Board Treasurer from July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026. B, that the Octora- Oh.
Nominate a nomination. So, we, we need a nomination process so we can have a name for the board agenda for next week.
I nominate Brian Norris.
I second.
Any other nominations? All those in favor of Brian Norris serving as a treasurer for the 2025-2026 year? To be added to the agenda. All in favor say aye? Opposed? Thank you, Brian. B, that the Octora Board of School Directors approve the list of current class of 2025 seniors at the Octora Senior High School having been individually considered for graduation by the Octora Board of School Directors contingent upon their successful completion of all local and state requirements. C, that the Octora Board of School Directors approve the superintendent search proposal with the Chester County Intermediate Unit, and just a reminder, there is no base cost to the district. Just a little bit further on that, the wheels are in motion. We've engaged the IU. Keep up with your emails. There'll be more information coming, and they are going to give us a presentation next week. D, that the Octora Board of School Directors approve Herbine and Company Incorporated for district auditing services for the years ending June 30, 2025, 2026, and 2027 at a cost of not to exceed $37,500, $40,000, and $42,500 respectively. E, that the Octora Board of School Directors approve the master services agreement with Deveraux Foundation for regular school year and extended school year student placement services effective July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026. F, that the Octora Board of School Directors approve the 2025 Extended School Year Placement Agreement with Elwin School for student A. G, that the Octora Board of School Directors approve the Academic Affiliation Agreement with Westchester University for student teaching, practicum, and field experiences effective for the 2025-2026, 2026-2027, and 2027-2028 academic years. H, that the Octora Board of School Directors approve the recommendation from Environmental Control Systems, Inc. for Bristol Environmental to remove and dispose of asbestos floor tile in the four classrooms at the Octora Middle School at a cost of $19,200. I, that the Octora Board of School Directors approve the proposal with Signal 88 LLC for security services effective August 1, 2025 through July 31, 2026 at a monthly cost of $28,193.20. J, that the Octora Board of School Directors approve the following curriculum. Think Mathematics, Mathology, Math, oh, poof, Methodology, sorry. Grades one to five. Upfront costs $66,000. K, that the Octora Board of School Directors approve the extension of unpaid family medical leave for employee A from May 12, 2025 through the end of the 2024-2025 school year. L, that the Octora Board of School Directors approve unpaid family medical leave for employee B from April 28, 2025 through May 5, 2025. M, that the Octora Board of School Directors accept the resignation of Ms. Joanne Redden as Director of Human Resources effective July 11, 2025. N, that the Octora Board of School Directors accept with regret the resignation of Ms. Catherine Westerfeld, as sophomore class advisor at the Octora Area High School effective June 6, 2026. O, that the Octora Board of School Directors accept the resignation of Ms. Allison Carr as eighth grade girls volleyball coach at the Octora Middle School effective May 5, 2025. P, that the Octora Board of School Directors accept the resignation of Mr. Michael Trainer as boys wrestling coach, boys wrestling head coach at the Octora High School effective April 25, 2025. Q, that the Octora Board of School Directors approve Ms. Kelsey Simpkins as a speech and language therapist effective August 12, 2025, pending completion of employee-related documents required by law and the district. Ms. Simpkins' salary will be $65,237, which is step 17 to max of the bachelor scale. Oh, step 17 to max of the master scale. Thank you. R, that the Octora Board of School Directors approve the following summer program employees effective July 1 through July 24, 2025. Emilyse Tudor Instructional Assistant, $22 per hour. Melissa Friedman, substitute E S Y teacher, $30 per hour. Maria Estrada, kindergarten readiness instructional assistant, $20 per hour. S, that the Octora Board of School Directors approve the following summer interns at $15 per hour effective June through August. Nicole Budzik, agriculture. Mike Trainer, maintenance. Cyon Brown, maintenance. Zachary Thompson, maintenance. T, that the Octora Board of School Directors approve the following supplemental contract for the 2025-2026 school year. Christopher Nixon Boyer, girls head basketball coach. 10 points at 620 each for a total of $6,200. U, that the Octora Board of School Directors approve the following athletic game worker for the 2024-2025 school year. Caitlin Craciolo, effective April 16, 2025. Moving on to the Education Committee report. Education Committee met April 28, 6:00 PM in the middle school hub. Talked about two main issues, but there was a lot going on in each one. Under Homeland Security, they gave us a presentation. There were six students and three instructors, gave personal review of their programs and their experiences in the programs. Students gave rave reviews about their experiences, the various certifications they were able to get, and some even got college credits. So, we heard from each one of the students. It's pretty interesting to hear their, their diverse backgrounds, different, like Dr. Lever mentioned earlier, from different schools. It was a pretty interesting presentation. And then obviously, the instructors gave pretty rave reviews about each of those individual students and, and the programs in general. There are over 60 students in the program from all over the county. Next, we reviewed the middle school model, basically two main ideas there, with the introduction to flexible schedule. There are fixed times during the day for advisory, lunch, and the two electives that the students have. The flexible time of the day focuses around, or centers around the, the core classes of math, ELA, science, and social studies. Trying to get the students in adjacent classrooms to limit the time spent in the hallways. And then those core subject teachers coordinate daily on the schedule for basically sharing the flexible time. So, that was a pretty interesting discussion. Next, we reviewed heterogeneous grouping. Grouping of students of various abilities together in the same classrooms encourages diversity of thought, collaboration, and peer learning. Research has shown that delaying the tracking or grouping by ability does have certain advantages. The proposal now is grade six and seven are heterogeneously grouped for the core classes, and in grade eight, there would be two levels of math, and that would be the first tracking. Get that right? All right, and that was the Education Committee. Any questions? All right, turn it over to Mr. Jerk for the Facility Committee.
Route 41 screening, nothing new on that, and it may not be necessary for the softball field. The softball field permit, we're working to close that permit out. It's still not playable yet due to draining concerns in the outfield, which we're working on right now. Update on the high school, middle school courtyard. We have an amphitheater put in, but we also have architectural plans that have to go out the bid. The good thing is, it is currently being put in use now by the students, especially since the weather's been breaking to get outside. Update on the maintenance skid loader. It was ordered over a year ago, then canceled. We need to reorder and/or reapprove by the board to get the maintenance skid loader. McLaurin update, they're looking at June 9 to do test bores for geothermal. We're waiting HVAC equipment for the middle school. The goal is to have that completed before the end of the summer. And also, the roof contract we've been talking about's been awarded. The goal is also to get that completed by the end of the summer. The fuel, we also in that one touched on the solar rebates availability, and we may need some new information from McLaurin of whether or not those will be available with the solar project. So, we'll be waiting on information for that from McLaurin. The fuel depot update, we're currently working with the cell tower company to pay for some, if not all, the fuel depot removal and relocation due to the fact they should have known the code, really. And we're also going back and forth, potential leasing agreements with them moving forward. The PLC chiller replacement, we just got the number, it's $456,000. So, we're gonna make a decision on that coming up hopefully soon. That will be to replace the chiller. The building has two boilers, which are in pretty good condition, and versus maybe a $6 million project to go with Geo there. So, we'll make decisions on what we want to do with that coming up soon. And the PLC sidewalk that's been getting put in was put in to cover more bus traffic for kids getting off buses and getting on the sidewalks. We've ran into some issues with the slope of the hill that was there that now needs a retaining wall, and total project cost estimated around $65,000 for that one. Those were the updates for consideration. We have a number for new pole vault mats, which are in poor condition now from Aluminum Athletic Equipment for $24,929.25. We touched on the water storage tank replacement. We have some proposals at this one with some numbers attached to it, but we're looking for other opinions and suggestions of what we can do moving forward with the water tower. The high school auditorium project that we are looking to do next summer, we were asked, Scott was asked to get some numbers if maybe we could do the lights this year in there and trade them out to LEDs. But we're probably gonna look forward to pushing that the next summer, since we're doing all the other work in there. Next summer, we can do that all in one shot, which would actually drop the labor cost a little bit due to the seeding. And for board agenda, the carpet replacement in the OIS library and the learning nook come with numbers of $12,600 for the library and $3,150 for the learning nook. Also, we have to put on the agenda for next week from Corbett, the new furniture for the OIS due to realignment. It's at 147, 194. So, we're putting on that the agenda. And we're also looking to purchase a new Kubota for the district at $28,000. We finished up with other with the tennis courts are cracking, which are gonna be taken care of, because they should still be under warranty, I would imagine. And touched on the gazebo behind the OIS and its function.
Moving on, other items or concerns? Next, visitor comments in general. Moving on, administrator comments and announcements.
I'll start tonight. Good evening, everybody. There's a lot happening at Acton Rara Area High School right now. This past Friday, our National Honor Society-sponsored mini-thon took place. It was a nice evening for students, filled with games and a dance, all in the spirit of raising money for the Four Points Diamond, Four Diamonds Organization, which is a nonprofit organization supporting children battling cancer. Secondly, tis the season for testing. We began our Keystone Testing today for students being assessed in algebra, literature, and biology, and we're also in the midst of our AP testing as well. I just wanted to take a minute to thank Jennifer Germain and our school counselors for coordinating these efforts. It's a pretty monumental task. This Thursday, we will hold our annual Academic Honors Dinner for students in the top four of their respective classes. It's also the evening where I will announce the class 2025 Valictorian and Salutatorian. And then finally, I would be remiss if I didn't plug our 10th Annual OA Best Expo. That takes place this Saturday from 9:30 AM to 1:30 PM. Please consider coming out to what is planned to be a great day filled with activities and food, all in the name of celebrating Acton Rara Agriculture, Business, Environmental Science, and Technology. We'll have a petting zoo, vendors, crafters, food trucks, live OACT presentations, student art displays, rides, games, and more. So, it's a great event, and we certainly want to invite anyone who wants to have a fun Saturday, come out to campus.
Good evening. Thank you also at the middle school. We have a lot going on at this time of year. We recently, this is past week, took our seventh grade students to the Franklin Institute, which was a wonderful trip. I've not been there in a few years, and, and I was very impressed with the way that they have really made it an immersive experience for students. You know, our, our children have access through the internet to so much information and so much phenomena, it's hard to wow them. But the Franklin Institute did a really nice job in immersing students and really wowing them. They had a great, great time. So, they enjoyed a successful, engaging field trip, reinforcing their STEM learning in a real-world context. On June 2nd, our eighth graders, I'm excited for this as well, will be taking a trip to Washington DC, where we will visit the Lincoln Memorial and the Vietnam War Memorial, Korean War Memorial. Students will go to the National Mall and recognize and learn that it's not what they expected a mall to be. So, that'll be interesting aha for them. But we're also gonna visit the American History Museum and Museum of Natural, of Natural History while we're there. So, looking forward to that trip on June 2nd. This Friday, we have our eighth grade parents, we're putting on a culminating dance for our eighth grade students. So, we're excited for that, for that as well, as well as some fun and competitive cornhole that's happening at that time as well. Our post-PSSA engagement activities for students, students had a great time. We had a, an inflatable obstacle course for students, and we had a, you know, teacher versus student soccer games, kickball games, and it was just a really fun, fun time for the students and a great way to decompress after the, after the testing. Upcoming, next week, May 22, our spring musical concerts. We have over one-third of our seventh and eighth graders who participate in our music program. So, really proud of that and, and excited for, for them to showcase their talents on May 22. And finally, and just recently constructed and advertised to students, we're gonna be having a talent show for our students during the school day, so they can showcase their talents to their classmates along the final couple days of school. So, we're excited about these opportunities and looking forward to continuing to build the middle school program out. So, thank you.
And I would like to thank Dr. Schultz and our teachers in grades one through five for all the efforts they put in to researching and exploring a new mathematics program. So, we're really excited.
Yeah, he, he has done an exceptional job leading us through that and science. So, thank you, Dr. Schultz. I have deeply appreciated Joanne Redden's time with us. It's too short, I've heard that a time or two in the last couple weeks. But thank you, Joanne. You've brought a lot of value and structure and organization to us that was badly needed. And with that, she's brought great structure to our hiring process. And the one thing that we, realignment sort of set us back because we wanted to be hiring earlier, but we couldn't because of realignment and the shifts. But the strategies that we put in place of early retirement notification has really helped us. We have had strong pools of candidates. We're quite happy with what we're seeing. One of the questions that we ask every candidate is, are you in process with other schools? And we're ahead of most schools. That's, that's what we were, that's what we wanted. We wanted to be on the front end of hiring. Joanne has done a really good job of organizing us. She's taken the processes that we put in place to try to help ourselves, and she's kind of blown those out. Our, our principals have done a good job of, of pushing forward, getting our round-one interviews done so that we can get to round two, which is the more intensive round with a larger group. And it's, it's exciting to see the work that we did to try to accelerate the process and to see the team really make that happen. And so, we're quite pleased that we, we had two speech and language pathologists that we would've hired. We've gone years without being able to find one. And so, congratulations to the whole team for doing that, but especially to Joanne, what she brought to that process for us this year.
I will repeat Dr. Lieber's sentiments there. Joanne will be dearly missed. Thank you for your time.
I would like to welcome Mr. Hoffman. And, and really, just thankful to the board that we, coming upon our, our election season and knowing that we have candidates who have, you know, put themselves out, which is not an easy thing, and applied for this very well-paying job. And so, we're, we are really, really grateful, and we have, we have a little bit more work to do in that area, and that's something that we'll be talking more about in the coming week. But thank you for, for joining us, Mr. Hoffman.
We'll announce the following meetings. Facility Committee Meeting, Monday, May 12, 2025, 6:00 PM in the middle school multipurpose room. There will be an executive session for legal, security, and personnel, Monday, May 12, 2025, after the work session in Room 102 at the middle school. The Policy and Finance Committee Meetings will be next Monday, May 19, 2025, 6:00 PM in the middle school multipurpose room. Next regularly scheduled board meeting, Monday, May 19, 2025, 7:00 PM in the middle school multipurpose room. And with that, we need a motion to adjourn. Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.